I'll call this meeting to order at five o'clock so we can get on with the business at hand. We'll start out with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation. Please stand for Sean to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Charles Stern, leading the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. We come to reverent stillness in these moments before this meeting, Almighty God, to give thanks for this day and this work, and to petition you that help by which its promise might come to full flower. We do indeed give you thanks for the life, health, and strength we have enjoyed to this moment in this day. We give you thanks too for this community and her people, and for the many freedoms and blessings we enjoy as her citizens. We give thanks further for the many servants of Smith County, both paid and unpaid, who give with their time, talent, and energy to maintain her well-being and safekeeping. We ask your blessing now upon these good servants gathered together in this place, in this hour, to attend to their appointed duties. Bring them together around a common devotion to the welfare of all Smith County residents. Keep them mindful of the many concerns of this community as they go about their work. Give them wisdom and patience in all their deliberations. Granted all things that transpire in this meeting might be carried out in a spirit of humble and loving service to you and to our brothers and sisters in this county. I offer this prayer in the name of Him who gave us the premier example of loving and humble service, Jesus Christ. Amen.
It's nice to see a crowd in here for a change. I hope we're not violating any laws here with the size of our crowd. And I do thank you for being here. Our next order of business is we need to recognize a couple of individuals, and I'll turn it over to Sean.
Thank you, sir. One very important person, Ms. Deborah Schwartz, has been a mainstay at the Treasurer's Office for 40 years. Let me get this. Sadly, Ms. Schwartz is retired, I guess, effective December 31st. But somehow Tom Parker ended up coming back part-time here a couple of weeks, which is a testament to her devotion.
Do you want to come up, Tom? Do you want to join us? You want to?
Since you're chair. So I'll read the resolution. A resolution in recognition of Deborah Schwartz upon her retirement from the Smith County Treasurer's Office. Whereas Deborah Debbie Schwartz began her journey with Smith County as a part-time employee of the Treasurer's Office in August of 1977, I won't tell you how much when I was born, and moved into a full-time position on January 1st, 1979. And whereas Debbie has served as one of the constant faces of the Treasurer's Office for over 40 years, serving citizens of Smith County with pride and honor, and whereas Debbie has served with three Smith County Treasurers over the course of her career, always providing a devotion to her work that has seldom been replicated and often appreciated. And therefore, now therefore let be it resolved by the Board Supervisors of Smith County that we hereby express our most sincere appreciation for the dedication, commitment, and hard work provided by Mrs. Debbie Schwartz to her fellow employees and the citizens of Smith County. And be it further resolved by the Board Supervisors of Smith County that the Board, County Administration, and staff as a whole wish Mrs. Schwartz a long, restful, and well-deserved and hard-earned retirement, adopted this ninth day of February 2011. But I guess you need to have your motion and all that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution as presented.
All righty, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
Any discussion? We have a couple of seconds. I would like to add, having worked with Debbie here in the county for... People don't realize what she had to put up with and what she has done for the county. I know she's going to enjoy her retirement, but I really appreciate the time and help you gave me, and you give to the county. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Sean.
All right, we have a motion. There's a couple of seconds. Now my last of us, roll call vote if you don't mind that way, because we got two of our board members on media video with us.
Okay, Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Wyant?
Absolutely, yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call?
Yes.
There we go.
I'd like to... I just like to say, you all don't know how much I appreciate this and how much it means to me. And I have worked for three Treasurers, and I'm so... I was so blessed, Mr. Davis saw some little bit of hope in me and gave me a job. And Ruth Albert kept me, and she was a clerk, and then became my boss. And I just loved her like she was my mother. And then come this little fella, younger fella, came in about 20 years ago. And so we have thoroughly enjoyed each other, I believe. It has been a pleasure working in the Treasurer's Office, and I have been blessed. I really feel so blessed, God's blessings, so much that I've been able to work in this job and have a retirement and able to go home and maybe enjoy a little bit with my husband. But I have promised that I would help him with anything that they need, and I fully intend to do that. And I really do appreciate all of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
Sean, let me say real quick that throughout my tenure working with Debbie, I had a tendency to get on her nerves a little bit. And she always kept this roller that she had had, I guess, from the time she started. And if I had a nickel for every time over the years that she has grabbed that roller, and I'm not exaggerating, they can back me up and say that either. I am going to kill him, or I am going to knock his head off. I had a nickel for every time that was said. So fittingly, and to her surprise, we had a luncheon back before Christmas, and I got that roller, and I signed it, and I had it framed in matter for her. But I will say, part of it was self-reservation.
Get rid of it.
And I have it hanging up in my home. My roller.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Sean, you want to introduce our tourism presentation?
Yes, so the next presentation, we... I'm honored to present Ms. Amanda Livingston. I don't know if you want to say anything or...
Oh, well, I'll just... And I speak this way.
Yeah.
My name is Amanda Livingston. Thank you very much for giving me a little time on the agenda tonight. I started January 25th, so I don't really have much to report as of yet. We had a great board meeting last night, and I expect great things from tourism in the coming months and years. We have a lot to offer in Smith County, and when I took this job, I knew that it would be a joy and a pleasure, and actually quite easy. Which is not to say that we're not going to work hard, but this, and I apologize for leaving y'all out. This county has so much to offer in the way of family entertainment, outdoor recreation, arts, culture, food. That part of the job is going to be really easy. All we have to do is tell the world about it, and they will come. And I want you to know, I've been watching every webinar and reading every bit of research I can find for a little glimmer of hope. And I just want to tell all of our small businesses and all of our folks, if you can just hang on a little bit longer, tourism is coming back. Visitors are going to be coming back. The first things research says that they're going to do when they feel safe to travel again, they're going to visit their family, they're going to want to enjoy outdoor recreation, and they're going to begin in the car to take a road trip. And those are three things that we have in spades. So I am... I think the sky is the limit for tourism in this area. And I also want you to know that I'm very aware that I'm a public servant. Although I'm an employee of the association, I understand where our funding comes from, and I feel I'm serving the citizens of the county. And tourism is economic development, and that is the measure which we will be holding ourselves to. And so I expect full transparency from myself, and I want you to call and ask questions, question me, double-check my numbers. But we are accountable to the citizens of Smith County, and we are ready to hit the ground running. So thank you for your time, and I look forward to coming to see you more often when I have some actual success to show you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the minutes of the previous meeting.
Mr. Chairman, you need to adopt your agenda, please.
Okay, thank you, Roscoe. You're absolutely right. We got our agenda? Go ahead.
I move to adopt them.
One second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion or additions or deletions? If not, all those in favor will do a roll call vote again.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson? Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Wyant?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call?
Yes.
Now we can move to the minutes of the previous meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I have more of a clarification question, not really disputing it, but over on page nine of our packet, where it refers to the Fourth Thursday will automatically be scheduled each month. I don't recall a time being designated. Historically, we've had a soft time of seven o'clock at night. My question is, are we going to continue to meet at five, as is in the first, excuse me, second Tuesday of the month? So they're aligning? Is that something we've addressed or not addressed?
We haven't addressed it, actually. And honestly, that was going to be one of the discussion topics that I wanted to bring up during the board rules and procedures. Because on months when we have a public hearing, a joint public hearing, it would need to be seven o'clock because the Planning Commission meets at 6:30 on the Fourth Thursday on a normal basis also. I prefer on months without a public hearing that we continue at the five o'clock. That way, we're not messing up the Planning Commission's agenda or item where they meet at 6:30.
Okay.
Automatically. So it's almost one of those where you're going to have to... It's an either/or. If there's a public hearing at seven, if it's not a public hearing at five, chances are we may even not even have, need one, but...
Okay. I wasn't really disputing the merit of it. I just was curious to make it missed, and I will be quiet.
Any other comments on the minutes?
Mr. Chairman?
Corrections? Yes.
As far as the schedule, I think there's been a problem in the past. I don't want to confuse citizens with back and forth and back and forth of scheduled meetings. I'd like for us to consider that seriously. I think continuity is important. So that's just my comment, and that's all.
One thought would be a five o'clock meeting and recess until seven or six thirty, whatever, the public hearing for the Planning Commission. Or I guess we could ask the Planning Commission to meet earlier in the afternoon. We just haven't had... I haven't had that conversation with Planning Commission yet.
I agree with Judy on the comment. It's sort of like with our dumpsters, you know? We want to have a time where people will know when they can attend. And if we bounce between five and seven, they got to find out, do we have a public meeting? But I think we need to discuss it a little bit before we really lock it in here, so... As for the rest of the minutes, any others comments, suggestions, corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt and accept.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? If not, once again, a roll call vote.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Wyant?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call?
Yes.
All right, motion. Except adopt the minutes as presented. We have no public hearing tonight. As for financial report, I'll let... We don't have a full report, but we have... I'll turn that over to Sean.
So I'll give you a synopsis. As the Treasurer's Office was pulling together the information late last week, the general ledger disappeared from the accounting software. Something happened with, as we were pulling together the W-2 information, working with Bright. I understand from the Treasurer's Office, they've been able to at least recapture all of the general ledger, but it's duplicated. So instead of saying that we spent 10 million, it just looks like we spent 20 million. So they're working through that, and as soon as they get the... Everything pulled back into place, they've assured me that they'll... We'll have a report that I can provide email. I'll send one in a mail for Mr. Stevenson. But it'll probably be later on this week or even earlier the week after. But it's been a mess to deal with. Talking with the Treasurer, he's never had to experience anything like this in his past. We don't know what caused it, but we are working on getting it fixed. The good news is, the appropriations that we're asking for, we have more than enough money in the bank account to cover. That's one thing I can assure you of. But we'll get the report out as soon as it's provided.
It's always a good sign to have enough money to pay your bills. So moving on from that, let's go to the additional agenda and do the appropriations. General County accounts payable listing of 1,556,000... 1,506,122 cents. Payroll of 740,000. Automatic drafts, rural development, 15,515. Utilities in Mississauga is 30,000. The County Administration Fund, 5,000 for October County appropriations of 1.9 million.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Thank you.
All right. Any discussion? Once again, roll call vote. Yes.
Mr. Atkins and Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Wyant?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call?
Yes.
Motion passing unanimously. Social Services, 310... 370,000 total.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, motion in a second. Any discussion? If not, roll call vote?
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Wyant?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call?
Yes.
All righty, motion approved unanimously. Schools Operating Fund, 3.1 million for instruction, 120,000 for administrative attendance and health, 115,000 for transportation, 450,000 for facilities, 315,000 for school food service, and 60,000 for technology for a total School Operating Fund of 4,160,000.
Move to approve.
We have motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call vote?
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
I'm staying.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Wyant?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call?
Yes.
Six oh and one passing. All righty, we have the EDA Fund Four, 6,123.15.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote? Yes for me.
Mr. Atkins and Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Wyant?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call?
Yes.
Sheriff's Department Fund Seven Forty Eight, 5,179.74.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
All righty, we have motion in two or three seconds. Any discussion? A roll call vote?
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Wyant?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call?
All right, motion passes. Finally, Recovery Court Fund Seven Forty Nine, 30,511.68.
Move to approve.
Move.
We have a motion, and I'll take that as a second, Roscoe. Any further discussion? If not, a roll call vote?
Mr. Atkins? Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Wyant?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call?
Yes.
Motion approved. All righty, that's all the requests that I'm aware of that needs approval at this point. Moving on to citizens' time. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No second.
Anyone here wishing to speak? If not, I'll close citizens' time. Y'all making it easy tonight for us. Presentations. I'll turn it over to Mr. Utz again.
We have our... You may know, may or may not know, the library has a new director, and Ms. Livingston is here and wants to give a presentation just to get a face in front of you, or at least have a face.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you so much for your time this evening. I did want to come by and introduce myself and say hello. I started with the library on December 1st, and after a few weeks, I had to go back to Arlington and get some shoulder surgery. So I've been back since last week. And I'm just delighted to be leading this library system. It is such a treasure. When I learned about the job and did my investigation and came down and met people here and took a look at the library system, I was impressed by several things. One was just the strength of the system. The fact that we have three branches in a town, in a county the size of Smith County is tremendous. But also the facilities, the collections. The second thing that impressed me was the devotion and dedication of the staff. We have a small staff, but they are tremendously committed to this community. And finally, the support of the library board that you all have appointed. It's a tremendous board, and I congratulate you all for making such terrific selections. They have been extremely supportive and helpful to me in getting started in the job. Obviously, the pandemic has been tough for libraries like it has been for the citizens of the county. And we very much miss our patrons and look forward to being able to reopen. But in the meantime, the staff has been so creative. We have had literally more than 5,000 curbside pickup services where people call. I'm taking calls from grandmothers who say, my grandchildren are coming in for Christmas, and I know Ms. Tracy knows the kids, so could you just pick up a big bag of books for me, and I'll be by to pick them up on Saturday? We have patrons who call and say, I don't know how I would have gotten through the pandemic without people choosing books for me and bringing them to my car for me. So we've had thousands and thousands of those curbside pickups. It's very popular, and frankly, we're going to keep that service after the pandemic. If our patrons like it and use it, we should keep it, so we'll be doing that. But we've also reached out online with virtual storytimes. We've done craft kits and activity kits that have been very popular. And next week, you can look forward, on the 17th, we're doing COVID care packages where we've cooperated with the Health District and a lot of community partners to create a packet of information about emotional and psychological well-being and resources for people in the community, and a few treats to make people smile. And so we've advertised those, and all three branches will be making those kits available to members of the community. So we're looking forward to getting past the pandemic, like all of you all, when we get the staff vaccinated, which is just starting to happen for us. So it'll be probably a little bit longer till I'm able to get everybody vaccinated, and then we see what the condition of the number of cases in the county and the number of positive tests that we're getting. Looking forward, we have a lot of plans. A library... And the other reason I'm here is I'm passionate about the role of libraries and communities, as I know you all are. Learning is a lifelong journey for all of us. And whether we're helping our children with their homework, or we're pursuing personal interests, or we're helping a loved one manage a health crisis, the library is the indispensable partner for every member of this community. And our aspiration is to be a partner to help everybody realize their dreams. We look forward to doing things like wireless hotspots and tech training for seniors. Our outreach program is back in operation in both Marion and Chilhau. So we've been able to support, even through the pandemic, our senior citizens. So I am here to tell you that I'm here to serve this county, to get to know this community, and to make sure that we offer the programs that the citizens of this county need. I am... I offer myself to you at any time to be a partner, to answer your questions. Transparency is the secret to public service. As you may know, I've spent 32 years representing our country around the world in federal service. Public service is the theme of my life. I enjoy it. I find it rewarding. And I look forward to bringing that service to Smith County. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have tonight or any other time.
Any questions from anyone? I have one myself. And I guess it's a personal one and it is county-wide, but you mentioned tech training for seniors. Do we have... Are our computers and software available? Are they in pretty good shape?
They are. We're doing inventory this month, and so we're checking on the age of all of our computers. So our public computers, as you may know, are funded through our grant from the state of Virginia. And so we are able to refresh those pretty regularly. We have... It's called... The program is called E-Rate, and we get those funds from the Library of Virginia, but ultimately, they come from the federal government. And so we are able to keep those computers fresh. And so that supports the laptops, but also the internet infrastructure. We also... The actual internet service into the branches is also supported by that E-Rate program. So yes, we will be refreshing. We are adding some digital resources because of the pandemic. So in the next few weeks, I hope, we'll have available on our website a couple of new digital resources, additional... We're adding additional audiobooks and e-audiobooks. We have an existing account, but we're able to add some more to it this year. That's all. All right?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to welcome you and liken to say I feel like we're very fortunate to have your skill and your talent in Smith County. I was really amazed with your experience that we were lucky enough to recruit you here. And I think that you have the support of the community and of our board to see the library succeed because it is important to our community.
Well, thank you so much. Everyone has made me feel so welcome. And it's a joy to come to work every day, to work with the team that I have and with the community that really loves our library. The community of 32,000 people, we have 18,600 cardholders. And in the last 18 months, those cardholders have checked out more than 150,000 items. And 12,000 people have participated in our programs. So that tells me that the community likes and uses and wants this library system.
Do you think there's any possibility... I know that we have, like, the branches in Chilhau and Flawell. We also have communities like Sugar Grove and Ridge Valley. Do you see anything in the future maybe to offer some service to those areas that are kind of removed?
Sure. Our counterparts in Williamsburg, Virginia, have created a really innovative program using a van and putting a Wi-Fi hotspot in the van and parking it in different communities on a regular schedule and enabling people to use the Wi-Fi from the van, but also send print requests to the van and have a staff member hand the print request to them through the window or put it in an envelope and put it on a table to keep physical distance. So we are absolutely interested. We're going to start with some Wi-Fi hotspots, some loaning Wi-Fi hotspots. And I don't know if you know about Wi-Fi hotspots, but a lot of libraries loan these now. They have to be where there is phone service. And so you loan them for a month, and you have to figure out the details of the data cap because that's where the financial bite comes. They're not expensive to buy initially, but that monthly service charge and data cap is the thing that you have to pay attention to. So we want to do a pilot to see if it's something that the citizens of Smith County are interested in. But, you know, my big ambition, if I can get the money, is to have one of those vans and, you know, park it in Sugar Grove and park it in Atkins and park it in Ridge Valley on scheduled days and work with partners who will host us, whether it's the school or business, who will host us even, you know, Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. We need some staff to be able to put it out there. But yeah, I think I absolutely want to be part of solving that problem for the county.
Welcome.
Thank you so much.
And as a member of the Smith County Public School System, I welcome you and look forward to working with you.
Well, thank you so much. You know, early childhood education is what it's all about. If we don't get them oriented to books and reading before they hit kindergarten, it impacts the quality of their learning for the rest of their lives. And so we spend a lot of time in preschools. And so we spend a lot of time in preschools in Smith County doing storytime and creating programs with them. So we're committed to helping everybody be successful.
We look forward to it, and thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Let me move to old business now. Review proposed edits to board rules of procedure.
Yes, sir. So in your packet, you have a, two versions, I think. One, a redline version with the comments and edits that Mr. Farley and I came up with, whether it be conversations between each other, or what we've heard from board members, or a mixture. So I'd like to just go through those real quick, and I'll try and be as brief as I can because hopefully you've had a chance to review them yourself. And then also, I've had a few brought to me since the packet went out, so I'll bring those up too. But looking over, if you turn to page 40 of the packet, this is one that Mr. Atkins had recommended, and I firmly think it's a good idea. So 1.6, if you took out the first sentence, the county administrator shall serve as a clerk of the board, and make it say, "The board may, at its first meeting of each calendar year or as needed, designate one clerk and one or more deputy clerks who shall serve at the pleasure of the board." I expect oftentimes, it'll be the county administrator, but that doesn't tie you down to the county administrator being served in that role. There's probably oftentimes when the board needs a different staff person rather than the county administrator to be your main point of contact. And I accept that, I mean, I agree with that, so that kind of opens that up a little bit for you. Page 41, item 2.3, more of a wording correction than anything else. "A special meeting of the board may be called by the chairperson." Right now, it says, "and shall be called at the request of two or more members." What that should say is "or." So you don't have the chair and two other members calling. It should be either or, and it kind of says that later on in the document too. And Robert's Rule of Order, that follows that Robert's Rules as amended. Turning over to page 44. What we're recommending is taking out the recorded hand count roll call. And basically, what I would say there is, it's the decision of the chairman. If the chair wishes to do, like, tonight, we have to, we're doing the verbal roll call because we have electronic members, or members joining electronically. Most likely, when we get back to a regular life, hand count or voice vote will return. So I did just recommend that minor change.
I would say, Sean, there as well, that some votes can be done as, instead of a roll call vote, you just say, "Vote for the board, everybody say aye, and any opposed say no." You know, a lot of things can be done that way without an individual vote. But there are some things that have to be a roll call vote, generally financial issues. And I'm not sure, there may be something else that I have to look at, but...
Ordinances.
Yeah, ordinances. So then it leads us up to the chair to how to do it, right? You know, everybody in favor say aye, or opposed, and then you're done, versus doing a roll call every time. But with the electronic stuff, you need to do it anyway to make sure everybody here can get their vote.
Looking through, if I'm page 45, item 310, we just simply recommended taking that out entirely. That's requests for funds not budgeted. That's something that happens no matter what. I would, as a board, or as a county administrator, I would, if there are funds in a budget that, or in a request that's not budgeted, I can approve them anyway, so they have to come to the board, referred to the Budget Committee. So we didn't, we couldn't come up with a reason of why that was in there to start with. So I think just for ease of use, recommend removing that. Looking at page 46, we currently hold our closed sessions when we have them after the meeting rather than at four o'clock, so we removed the four o'clock start time for the board meeting and changed it to five. This is where I guess we need to figure out how to word your fourth Thursday meeting, if it happens. And I'm fine, I think it's, we can make accommodations if we choose to, every fourth Thursday is a seven o'clock meeting rather than a five o'clock. I'm certainly open to however the board wishes to move that. We'll make it happen however you wish it to be.
Mr. Chairman? Any comments?
You know, I'm in total agreement with having a particular time that don't go one way or another. It works several different ways. It keeps it public on a specific time. It keeps people that serves on this board...
If that has a business, it's easier for us to schedule if we know it's one certain time. I know the planning commission's here. I think at one time, when they conflicted with the board, they met upstairs, or they could meet earlier. I would think I'm not downplaying the planning commission, they're very important, but you know, I'd like to see us meet at seven o'clock every time, and then what we need to do to accommodate them, either whether it's another room, or they can move up. Works best for me.
Alright, thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would echo Mr. Stevenson's comments about a consistent time. For me, also being a business owner, helps me plan better. So yeah, I mean, that's kind of my limit there, it's just, it would be good to be consistent as opposed to either or. Plus, I think it's better for the citizens to know we're going to be at a particular time.
Would seven o'clock be that preferred time for the fourth Thursday then?
It works good for me. I mean, I'm fine with five o'clock, I just want it consistent.
I would agree with Mr. Stevenson, just be consistent whichever way. I can make it happen either way, just...
I don't know that we would have enough on the agenda, if we did a five o'clock, to be able to move to a seven o'clock public hearing. So I think it'd be easier all around if we did seven o'clock, and then we can deal with the planning commission on their calendars, on their schedules.
I think that's a good point. You know, we may have some dead time if we go at five o'clock, waiting till a seven o'clock public meeting, which dead time kills me. I don't do well with dead time.
Someone want to put in the form of a motion that we insert the seven o'clock start time?
I'll make that motion.
Alrighty.
I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second that we, in our policy here, we put the fourth Thursday of each month meeting starting at seven o'clock. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Let's do a roll call vote.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call?
Yes.
Alright, motion passed. Back to you, Sean.
Looking further, there's some items, order of business on the agenda that Mr. Farley had recommended. Basically, I almost, do you want to talk to this, 4.2?
Yeah, I just, instead of adopting the agenda every time, it gives the chairperson some flexibility to move around. Like, if you adopt that agenda, the rules, Robert's Rules say, you have to follow that agenda and try to follow those times. That's the purpose of doing that. Robert's Rule says that's generally for a larger board, 15-plus members, you know, to try to hold to a time and keep things limited. My experience has just been that if you just have an agenda that's not adopted, then the chairman can move things around. Like, if VDOT's here to talk to us and they're at the end of the agenda, and you don't want them to wait, you can just move them up without requesting an amendment to the agenda and a vote and passing it. The chair just says, hey, let's take VDOT now. So the chair would have the ability to move items around on that agenda at his pleasure to help accommodate people in the crowd. And really, that's all that is, is just taking that piece out, saying we adopt the agenda every time. And the chairperson works with the county administrator to create the agenda and pass it out. And then you're not tied to a vote to talk about something new. You know, it's just, if you have another category, which Sean, I think, is starting to put on there is, you just pop something up and say, hey, this is old business, whatever happened to this road over here in this neighborhood, you know, or something like that. And it's not on the agenda, but you could bring it up. So that's why I took out, or suggested or recommending taking out, adopting the agenda.
And then further on there, on citizens' time, we're just clarifying, we're, I think we talked about this at the last meeting. If you take that specific 15-minute timeframe out of your rules, and like tonight, we didn't have anyone to speak, we don't have 15 minutes of dead time to wait for. You can just move on. We kind of did that tonight, probably, you know, in reality, if you're under the old rules, we should have waited, but I'm glad we didn't because it's, again, 15 minutes of dead time, and that's what we're trying to prevent here. The...
Sean, I would say the other thing on citizens' time is the limit on the time.
Yes, yes.
It had a limit in here of 15 minutes for citizens' time, so if you had 20 people, the idea was that you had to divide up 15 minutes among 20 people. And what I think is, you just do citizens' time, you don't put a time limit on it. But there is some time limits on, like, public hearings to allow everybody to have, like, five minutes each or three minutes per person, and you just follow those rules. But that's up to you guys of how you want to do it. I think if a lot of citizens come out, you're going to need more than 15 minutes for them to talk. And you either take out the 15 minutes and then maybe set the rules when you start, when you have a big crowd, saying each person can talk for three minutes, you know?
And that's kind of what I've looked at doing, you kind of see on the agenda. I've added a little bit of blurb. And those are, I took the liberty of this one just as a trial to see what would happen. But our public hearing rules are three minutes for an individual, five minutes for a group, 10 minutes for, I think there's a bigger for 10 minutes. But there's three different sets, so I think if you take that same rule, that same mindset to citizens' comments in general, would be a whole lot easier to operate under.
So the recommended language right now is, leave it in there for 15 minutes. But if you have more than five citizens show up, then everybody gets three minutes to talk, which is the same time limit on the public hearing. But you can word it however you want, that was just my suggestion.
Mr. Chairman, my thoughts would be to, in an attempt to try to clean up, clean it up a little bit, maybe put some verbiage in there to say that the citizens' time would be following the formal hearing guidelines? I guess...
Yeah, the public hearing guidelines.
Public hearing, sorry, wrong setting for formal hearing, public hearing. That way, you've got something to hang your hat on, is to go back to a written document to guide you, to help us guide and keep us straight, and a little more clarity. That's just my thoughts.
Yeah, you just add that sentence right at the end, under 4.3, when we start striking stuff. So you address the board regarding any matter, period, and then say, "All citizens speaking should follow the rules for a public hearing."
Yeah, we don't have to recreate the will when we got it over in the other...
Right, it's in the other section, yep. And that lays out the three minutes or whatever.
Right.
Again, on 4.4, just working with the agenda and taking out the time constraints that were placed in there for citizens' time. If we keep it more flexible, more open, I think the flow of the meeting works better. The next several items deals with what the order of business, you know, where the minutes, approval of the minutes and other such things. I basically just took on 4.6, page 48, recommend taking, basically, approval of the minutes shall be the next item on the agenda, following the invocation and approval of the agenda. If we're not going to be approving the agenda, just take that out. Page 49, number four there. "In case of emergency circumstances, no action shall be taken." There are times when the board chooses to dispense with the rules, and it may not necessarily define or be defined as emergency circumstance. So I'm recommending rewording that to, unless approved by majority vote of the board, then you can't vote. So that opens that up to where you can continue doing what you're doing, at times dispensing with the rules and sometimes choosing not to. It's just a majority, a motion second, majority vote, move forward. So that clarifies the current practice.
Sean, I think, just to make sure I understand correctly, so generally speaking, when you have a public hearing to adopt an ordinance, or you're having a public hearing about any matter, you hear the public comments, close the public hearing, and then that matter just gets, puts on the agenda the next meeting, and you don't vote on anything. Now, if you're having a public hearing for VDOT to adopt the six-year plan or something like that, sometimes you have to, you're in a time crunch and you've got to adopt that resolution or whatever after that public hearing. That's where this would come into play, where you suspend the rules or a vote of the board says, we want to go ahead and take action tonight. Or if the board, the majority of the board says, hey, we want to take action because all those people are here, right? And we want to make this decision because you really feel confident about what you want to do. You just do the vote and then you can make a decision without carrying it over to the next meeting. Is that right, Sean?
That's exactly it, thank you. Mr. Atkins did remind me, turning over on page 51, item four, that was something that popped up last year that I failed to remember. Regarding the firearms, there are rules, I guess, at the General Assembly about preventing or restricting firearms or not, and what the expectations are. So I did recommend removing just the word firearm from item four, so we don't have to worry about what constitutional rights we're choosing to, or are we inflicting. Page 40 or 53, just adding in one statement or one word. A member is unable to attend the meeting due to a temporary, permanent, or permanent disability. Just the word, need to include the word "to," amidst that, Mr. Atkins corrected. And that's really the gist, oh, I'm sorry. Page 55 is the most important thing. Currently, as this, Deal and Mr. Call are participating electronically, since this is in state code, we're fine, but we did not include those provisions in our rules and procedures back in March, April, whenever that state code change was done. And actually, looking at the current rules, we're, the five of the board members that are present, in theory, should have voted to allow Ms. Deal and Mr. Call. But since, again, since the General Assembly has changed the code, I think we're fine. But this formalizes things in our own rules and procedures. And this was presented by Mr. Farley, I hope he has anything further.
No, it just allows us to do what we're doing. I mean, it just puts it in the rules, code allows us to do it, we just throw it in the rules to have it.
So we can do one of two things. We can, if the board chooses to approve as amended as discussed tonight, we can do so, and I can make the change, I've made good notes. Or if you prefer, I can make the changes and you can approve a final version at the next meeting, whichever direction the board feels most comfortable.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to see an updated revision and review that before we formally vote on it.
I can do that.
I'd second that motion. Alright, we have a motion to second to, like, the revisions and then come back to our Thursday night meeting. Any more discussion? All those in favor of that? You know, since we're video, roll call vote, and I say yes.
Mr. Atkins, Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Back to you, Sean.
Next item is the committee. I don't have any other changes or recommendations on the rules. Next item is committee report.
Alright, we go into the budget committee, page 73.
Your turn here.
We had a budget committee meeting on February 2nd, present. We're myself, Rob Valley District Supervisor Lori Deal, and Royal Oak Supervisor Judy Wyatt. Staff member Sean, Lisa Richardson, Kristi Byes, Jeff Richardson, and Tom Burkett. Me, Jeff Richardson, Commissioner of Revenue, and Tom Burkett. We're here to present the information on revenue... Meeting Jeff Richardson, Commissioner Revenue and Tom Burkett were here to present the information on revenue projections, information including unemployment numbers along with comparisons. Of personal property tax tables dating back to two thousand and nine. Ms. Wyatt asked to be provided with additional information on land use and acreage numbers. Mr. Richardson and Mr. Utz presented a list of potential businesses that would be involved with the collection of proposed mill tax. After discussion, the committee agreed to move forward with the study and look at considering an ordinance to enact the mills tax in the county. And this is, once again, this is just doing a study. We're not voting on a mills tax, so no vote required on that. Mr. Utz provided an update on the proposed cigarette tax. Administrators from local counties recently visited Northern Virginia Regional Tax Authority to learn more about the opportunities and requirements or countywide cigarette tax. Proposed General Assembly legislation will require a regional approach if the county chooses to proceed with the enactment of tax after two thousand and twenty two. As such, the group of administrators as well as the county treasurer and commissioner of revenue all recommend considering the regional approach. Tax revenue collection can be designated in specific areas within the county which could help alleviate stress on personal property and real estate tax rates. The committee unanimously agreed to continue the study on how to move forward with the regional approach. I guess we need to vote on that.
Well, I've been, I do have the authorization to develop the study. It's kind of similar to the mills tax if you wish. No decision needs to be made until we have a study together to present to the board if that's if that's final with you all there. I still have a lot of work to do.
Okay. Anyone have a comment to make on that right now? We move on here. And then finally, Mr. Utz presented the budget amendment request from Social Services for CSA funds not included in the original budget for two thousand and twenty one. Foster care needs have increased which have resulted in the budget shortfall. Mr. Utz is currently serving on the CPMT, CPMT board and they are working to identify cost saving measures. But additional nine hundred and thirty four thousand, nine hundred and seventy four dollars is being requested to cover CSA expenses through the end of this fiscal year. Even though our auditors have said it isn't required, the committee would like County Attorney Scott Farley. To determine if a public hearing is necessary due to the buzz announcement that was approved for CSA at the January board meeting in the amount of ninety nine thousand, four hundred and thirty seven dollars. Which although done in two separate actions totaled in more than one percent of the overall county budget. Royal Oak District Supervisor Judy Wyatt made a motion to recommend the approval of the budget amendment pending a public hearing determined by the county attorney. Ry Valley District Supervisor Lori Deal seconded the motion and it was unanimously approved. I'd like to state right now, this, Mr., our county attorney has come back and stated that we do not have a problem. We can go ahead and do it the way we've done it. And so I think I was the one that raised the issue and I'm satisfied with his finding and so we can go ahead and vote on this tonight. It's a board, a committee recommendation. Any further discussion?
Want to ask a question?
Sure.
Nine hundred and thirty four thousand dollars on extra foster care, is that what I'm hearing right?
Yes.
I can give you a history, a quick rundown. So last year's budget, last year's actual was just over one point eight million. The budget that was developed this current year was one point two billion. Knowing we're going to have to do an amendment later on, but how long can one point two million last? In the late December, we had forty one kids in foster care. And that budget amendment expectation was about five hundred thousand dollars, which would have put us right in line with where we were last fiscal year. Whatever happened, something happened in December, early January, and we now have sixty one kids, sixty four kids in foster care. And those kids, the care for the kids around three thousand dollars a month is the cost. We don't have enough foster homes in the county, so a lot of them are placed elsewhere in the Commonwealth. So that's where the big jump has gone. One of the things that we've talked about at the CPMT is with county is seeing some of the same Washington County, Lane County. If the four of us were to come together, could we afford to fund our own center to keep these kids from having to go elsewhere in the community or Commonwealth? At a much less, a much lower rate than three thousand dollars a month per kid. We could probably do it for half that or, you know, or better.
So the current rate's three thousand dollars?
That's the average. That's the average. It's anywhere from twenty eight hundred to thirty five hundred depending on where you, where the child is placed. And a lot of times we don't have the decision of where that child's placed.
So we got this money?
Yeah, so out of the nine thirty four, seven hundred and forty thousand, I want to say seven hundred and forty thousand is state money and the rest will be the county. So general fund is right at two hundred thousand dollar portion.
Thank you.
Any other questions? This CSA is a big, and administrator myself has talked a lot about this and that we got to, you know, kind of. And we're working hard to put a cap on these costs to make sure we do the right thing, we help the kids. But see if there's not some other ways to skin the cat, so to speak. We have kids all the way out in Newport News and Virginia Beach. You know, hopefully there's something closer because it's just, and part of what, by having a child, I used to be, I don't know, but it's still the rules. That once a month you provide for one of the parents to be able to go out there. So I mean, it's not just the cost of the kids, but when we, and that's why the idea of having something more local really appeals to me and that we can. We can save a lot of money by having, and we put our citizens' job opportunities by having something in this area. So I think it's something we need to look at down the road. Any other questions on this?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just make a quick comment.
Hold it, Lori. Judy's got the floor.
Do you think COVID has contributed to this uptick?
I don't.
Okay.
Unless it's uptick in Social Services calls, call volume, that's about the only reason.
So what are some of the circumstances that you're aware of that's increased?
The biggest is the foster care. The foster care costs. Now, I don't know specifically why it went from forty to sixty plus in just a couple of weeks. But the long term outlook looks like those sixty plus are going to be there for three, four, five months. And they won't, Social Services, you know, of course, you know, they don't, they're not allowed to share a whole lot of specific information with us. But I can piece together some ideas for the board.
I know that's something you've been concerned about for a long time. And in our meeting, I think you had some suggestions, there were some suggestions of maybe how we can reduce those costs. So I think we seriously need to look at that.
Well, Sean and I had several discussions on that and I think he is implementing as best he can some of those costs, I don't want to say cost savings, but. Cost sharing, let's put it. We got to make sure he, CSA is seven agency grouping together to fund and do this. And one group is putting kids into the system and then putting them in this place or that place with no say from the other six. And we want to get more on board where the other six has some say as to where those children are going. Ms. Deal, you wanted to make a comment?
Yes, I just wanted to reiterate the importance of supporting projects like Freedom Tabernacle is willing to do to house some of these children. That will certainly take, some of the children may not, maybe not all of them, but certainly a handful of them to give them a safe place to be.
Absolutely. Any other comments? All right, we had a motion to approve, oh, that was a committee, and we had a second, I believe.
Committee recommendation.
And so any more discussion? Okay, roll call vote, all those in favor.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call?
Yes.
All right, motion passed. Going back to our committee minutes. Ms. Deal made, I also like to see updated numbers, costs for assistance being provided to citizens through Social Services and other members agreed. Mr. Utz stated he would work with the DSS and CSA staff to get that done. He's working on that, I assure you. Based on the county's original agreement with SWIFA, proceeds from any land sale were to be distributed on a fifty fifty basis between Smith County and Washington County. But that has not happened over the years. At the most recent SWIFA board meeting, the board authorized proceeds to be paid to Smith County in the amount of two hundred and sixty eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars and fifteen cents for those land sales. Since these funds were originally intended for the expansion of economic development opportunities. Our county administrator, Mr. Utz, has recommended they be transferred to the county's EDA budget. A motion was made by Ry Valley District Supervisor Lori Deal to recommend the transfer of the SWIFA land sale proceeds in the amount of two sixty eight, eight hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. And fifteen cents to the EDA budget for economic development purposes. Royal Oak District Supervisor Judy Wyatt seconded the motion and it was unanimously approved. So once again, as committee recommendation, do we have any further discussion? I would like to say as far as I know, there's no particular, it's not, EDA has no particular earmark for this money. But it gives them money in the coffers to attract potential industry that way because they say, hey, look, we got the money. You come here, we got it, we're not going to let you go looking for it. And that's a big, sometimes that's a big, be able to say that. So we just want to put the money into EDA budget or into their hands instead of us keeping it here.
I think that's exactly where it needs to go.
I agree. Any other comments? Hearing that, I'll call for a roll call vote.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call?
Yes.
All right, motion passed. We'll expect our thank you card any day now. I just think anything we can do to help EDA have funds to attract industry or whatever we need to do. That takes care of the budget committee report. Now we move into the personnel committee. And Park District Supervisor Chris Ratliff is the chair. I'll turn the floor over to you, Chris.
All righty. A meeting of the Smith County Personnel Committee was held at the county office building on Tuesday, February second, two thousand and twenty one at ten AM. Committee members present with Park District Supervisor Chris Ratliff acting as chair. Atkins District Supervisor Charlie Atkins. District, Chihuahua District Supervisor Mike Sturgill were present. Staff members, Smith County Administrator Sean Ut, Assistant County Administrator Lisa Richardson and Administrative Assistant Christie Bryce. Chairman, Park District Supervisor Chris Ratliff called the meeting to order at ten AM. Mr. Ut presented a proposed job description and salary range for the administrative assistant slash deputy clerk position. That was discussed at the January committee meeting. The position would serve as administrative support for the board as well as other departments of the county that currently do not have an administrative support. He noted the position would be housed within the county administration office and Mr. Utz is recommending hiring the position as a grade eight. After discussion, Chihuahua District Supervisor Mike Sturgill made a motion to approve the job description as presented and authorized the advertising and hiring of the position at a grade eight. Atkins District Supervisor Charlie Atkins seconded the motion and the motion was unanimously approved.
All right, we have a committee recommendation. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is there a job description that the board could have a copy of?
Definitely, sure. Yep. And I will say that the grade eight, just to let you know, is a twenty five to forty four thousand dollar range. I expect at max twenty six to twenty eight maybe, but I don't expect to have to go any higher than that. I'm pretty excited about the potential.
Yeah, it would be helpful to just have that.
Sure.
And no budget amendment required for her ear because we have the, we were okay there.
Yeah, there's a position unfunded.
Why do we have those funds there already?
Those funds were set aside basically as a, whether it's a project manager or a support person of any sort. It was a fifth position that was in the budget that I inherited. And it's listed as project manager, but I think in, as we work through our organizational restructuring in the next year or so. I think the project management duties will be absorbed elsewhere.
Just from my own information, what were included into the project manager position that was previously there?
Honestly, I have no idea. That was something that was just, it was in the budget. I would assume grant management type work. We don't have any water sewer projects going right now, but that project manager position could do, could do some of that type of work. What I have been, what I've been working on with the budget development, we're still in its infancy, but. Maybe not this coming year, but in the future, whether it's a fellow works type position, that would take a lot of that work on. Right now, it's being done through a contract with the Planning District Commission. On a per project basis, basically whether it's the overlook or, we have UPRs that we're working off the water.
Well, that would be helpful for me just to know specifically what the duties are in this new position.
For this position, this proposed position. I'll email that out this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion about the new position? Hearing that, I'll call for a vote authorizing the advertising hiring position eight. Roll call.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
No.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
I have to say no right now because I don't know really what that job is.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call?
I would say no right now. I need more information. I'll just look at it.
Okay, we have four to three. Although the motion passed, I do want the information to go out to everyone so they can see that.
Yes.
Yes, I'd appreciate it.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Utz reviewed the proposed changes for the personnel policy. And I'm going to try to slow down just a little bit here so we can all get on the same page and look at what we're referring to here. Subsection A or letter A, section two point one, recruitment and selection. That's referencing page eighty four in your handout or your, I guess, your package. It allows for a position to be posted internally if the county administrator deems that there are more than one viable candidate eligible for promotion to a vacancy. And I guess for further explanation, Mr. Utz, would you like to step up and clarify what?
So the current policy says if I see that there's an employee that's worthy of a promotion, I can make that promotion. It does not have any type of format if there are two people that I see equally eligible. So basically what I'm proposing here is I can post it internally only. It doesn't go in the newspaper, it doesn't go online. But it's open to current county employees for whatever promotion and we follow the normal steps, interviewing and all that. Right now, we don't have that. I don't know that we've ever had, maybe we haven't had that issue arise, but I can see it coming. So this is what, it's just a minor adjustment.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. Let's go to section B, excuse me, letter B, section two point two. That is referencing page eighty five in your packet. It is the types of appointments. Specifically extend new employee probationary period to a six month with a maximum extension of ninety days. And again, as you'll refer over to page eighty five, Mr. Utz, would you care to expound upon that, please?
Yes, sir. So the current, the current practice is we hire a new employee and he or she is on a probationary period for three months. But we can extend that one more month. It's been my practice that if you give, you get a person three months to do their position. Give them some feedback, what they're doing wrong, what they can fix. Sometimes thirty days isn't long enough to do that, to fix it and to, you could, you could lose a good employee potentially for that. So what I'm recommending is go into a six month evaluation period or probationary period. I think we need to change that too, but that's later. Probationary period with a potential extension of another ninety days. If the employee doesn't work out within that, you know, certainly before the nine days is up and you take whatever action you need to. But it does extend it out a little bit so you can, you can help mentor or whatever you have to do.
Thank you. Now, just to clarify, you mentioned something about this is still within the guidelines of the state.
This follows what the state personnel policy guidelines are, the six monthed. Actually, I think the state allows for a six month extension, but I don't know that we need a full six month extension.
So we're still right in line with the state guidelines, okay. All right. Let's go down to line C and line D. I'll take them together because they're on the same page, referencing page eighty six. Referencing page eighty-six, that is section 2.3, nepotism. It's basically a grammatical change, and let me get the other one here before I turn it over to Mr. Ut. Section 2.4, residency requirement. Where managers of the following departments be allowed to live outside of Smith County at the time of their initial employment. With the stip, excuse me, the stipulation that he or she choose to move residence, he or she would be required to relocate to Smith County. These positions include animal control, E-911, finance information systems, solid waste, maintenance and utilities, as this can help with recruitment of those positions should they ever become vacant. So, again, I direct your attention to page eighty-six, 2.3, and 2.4. Mr. Ut?
Thank you, really, all I would, all I would add is one thing we kind of discussed at the last meeting that we've seen with recruitment of leadership positions. There are some positions that certainly need to be fully invested in the community. That's the county administrator, assistant county administrator, county attorney, if we have one on staff, county engineer, economic development community developer. Those positions, I would recommend that they remain, keep the requirement for, required to move in. The other department-headed level positions are, a lot of the positions that can be done, they're not on-call as much, but if they, if they are, what I have in my mind at least is to have kind of a tree where, you know, it's not the department head that's on-call twenty-four seven, it's an assistant or somebody so that that person's not having to react every night. But, following Dr. Ratliff's comment from last meeting, I thought it was a great idea to require that if, if you want to be a leader in the community and you live our next county over, but you choose to move, we should require you to relocate into the, into the county. That helps a lot with our, with our recruitments. If, if I'm trying to hire, I'll use the IT director position, I think we got a great, a great hire there, but I'm not sure he would have come if we'd required him to move to the county because he had just located in a house, or just bought a house in Washington County. If he was to live in the farther reaches, you know, in Sugar Grove, maybe beyond Sugar Grove or in Ridge Valley area, chances are it's gonna be the same length of time to get to the office as, as somewhere out in the county. So, that's, that's at least my mindset in making the recommendation to the committee.
Thank you, sir.
May I comment? I'm against it, as you know, altogether, I think some of those I give reason why. I want to go ahead, if I can at this time, give another reason. You know, we, we raise our kids up to come back and we want to keep them in Smith County. And, you know, I heard from the voter registrar time and time again, her son had to move to Bristol, and I'm sure your hire is well-qualified for ITT or whatever, but I'm sure that if we looked hard enough, we got somebody qualified living here. And the ones you've got on here, kind of bother me a couple, maintenance and utilities. Water department people, we provide a truck to drive home to be on-call. Are we talking about just department heads here or employees?
Department heads.
Well, you know, I think, even if it's a department head and he's in the water department, he's driving his vehicle home. I sure hate to see a vehicle go across county line. I think you ought to be invested in Smith County, animal control is another thing. I think those people need to be handy. I guess E-911, E-911, a little different, solid waste is not, but I think when you go to maintenance and utilities, I think those people ought to live in the county for response time, especially if they're driving a vehicle. You know, I'm, I'm totally leave and invest in Smith County. If you want a job in Smith County, move to Smith County, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I echo the same concerns as Mr. Stevenson. I've previously expressed that, and I also see the other side, that there's good qualified people from other areas, but we're a high unemployment area. I do think that we have, we have some good people here in Smith County who really deserve good jobs. And they're contributing to the tax base, they're participating in the community. And if you've got two people almost equally qualified, I think that it's, it's a disservice to our county to not give no preferential treatment. So, and I know you have the votes to do what you want to do, but I just want to go on record, I feel the same way.
Yeah, I, I sort of agree with you on that, Judy. And if we have two equally candid candidates for position, I would hope that the county resident would have an extra bonus point or whatever you want to call it, that they would be one we would hire. It's where we have a, someone in the county that's probably not as qualified as the person who lives one mile from the county line. Do we, do we decide to go with a less qualified person because the other one is paying taxes in the county? Or do we get someone that can do the job and do it quicker and more efficiently? I think we, at this point, we need people who can do the job.
I agree, Mr. Chairman. I, I agree, and I'm not trying to macro-manage by any means at all, just to represent the best interest of our county. For example, and I don't want to really pinpoint the ITT thing, but we had people in that department. Maybe their skills weren't quite where they hired, but perhaps they could have been brought up to that skill level with minimal effort. So, that's just something I'm very sensitive to.
May I, right quickly, you know, I can see that, of course, I think you fully intend moving.
Oh, yeah, yes, sir.
You're getting the head of the ladder, you want the cream of the charge, but to further on what you said, you know, we may not have had somebody reach exactly what he did, but they could do the job. And this is county taxpayer money, it is paid for by the people of Smith County. It all did, you know, I have a heart with this, and I, you know, I believe in allowing people time to move and stuff, and I don't even know what the ITT salary was, I'm sure y'all do, y'all are into the budget yet, but if you're gonna apply, I would think it's a pretty good salary. If you're gonna apply for something, then you, you need to be willing to reinvest in this county. I think it's what the people in the north fork is related to me, and I, I think it's very important.
Any other comments or opinions?
Mr. Chairman, if I can make a comment?
Go ahead.
I see both sides of this, this is kind of a, not a black or white issue, and I respect everybody's comments, and it's a chicken or egg question. Do we hire somebody that is a stellar employee and they're driving back and forth for six months, and then they say, oh, I think I'd rather live in Smith County? And then they decide to move, they build a house that adds to our tax base. I get that. The other thing I get is geographically, we are challenged. So, if one of my constituents in camp is the maintenance director and they have a call, somebody from Whitfield can probably get here faster than they can from camp. I don't know if we want to look at a distance or a time travel concept, and maybe not a specific county concept, but at the end of the day, I, you know, I respect the fact that they need to be county residents. However, I understand that there's also other counties that don't enforce this. Washington County is a great example, their administrative assistant and their deputy county administrator live in Smith County. So, we may have one or two positions that live outside of the county and we may not be getting their tax dollars, but there's other county residents that work in other counties and we're getting their tax dollars. So, at the end of the day, it's a wash. And I feel like our goal as supervisors should be to make sure that the person in the job is the best fit for the job and try to recruit them to do here. That's my opinion.
Thank you, any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I might as well weigh in on this a little bit.
Go ahead, Roscoe.
I had an opportunity one time, exactly what we were talking about with Appalachian Power Company. I could have went to work with them at a power station in Aggieland. They required me to live in Washington County. I was just three miles from the county line and they just built the house and just got married, and I could not tell them I cannot do that. They said, well, that's our requirement and that's what it's gonna be. So, I did not get that job, I went to coal mine. But I agree with Phil, if you take county money from the taxpayers, you worked hard to get their money, everybody knows that. You should be willing to put back into the county by your taxes, which is not too bad an ask, I don't think. If you're gonna collect off of it, you should give back a little bit. That's just my opinion, I feel sorry for anybody in that situation because I know how they feel, I've been there. But I had to go along with Phil on it, I said, thank you.
Alrighty. Thank you, Roscoe, any other comments?
Just want to acknowledge, I think when we get our utility guys a truck, when we all voted for the West Water Truck, they had to live within the motor line. I don't think we're giving to everybody, just answering a question about living too far away to end. I'm against this, and you know that.
May I make a recommendation to the chair of the committee then? Even though this was included in the recommendation, just hearing the conversations, maybe it needs a little more tweaking. So, if, if it is okay with the chairman of the committee, I would recommend removing this part from your recommendation so we can maybe come up with some better language or, you know, be an easier vote when we get to the full recommendation.
So, you, just to be clear, you're recommending that we?
Would table 2.4, changes to 2.4.
Table 2.4.
So, I guess your recommendation, and this probably would need a, I'm gonna look at Scott, our county attorney, the recommendation from the committee will be, or was recommending, approving the changes. Since the recommend, the committee recommendation may be changing, it may require a full motion second.
Yeah, I think, I mean, in a couple of ways you could do it, just do a new motion and a second of whatever you're proposing from the committee. Or you could ask the committee members to agree to the change or amend the recommendation to remove that piece. So, I think at the end, you go through your thing and just, you make a motion to the board to approve Personnel Committee as discussed today, and then you get a second from the board, and then you just vote without having to deal with amending the recommendation from the committee.
So, just to make sure I'm understanding, that we would vote to strike this down as the, as the whole recommendation, and then the whole board, the current sitting full board could take up the, the task of approving?
As it being minded, good point.
Yeah, I think you're just saying that because we changed the recommendation at this meeting, that it's truly not a recommendation from the committee anymore because it's been altered. So, as I, as is stated in the minutes of the committee, I, Chris Ratliff, move that we adopt those recommendations, and then you just get a second and you can vote on it.
I apologize for confusing things, but I think it would be easier, an easier vote, because I think a lot, this seems to be the only
Right, I mean, to me.
...proven on, but this is the hottest topic to deal with, and it would need more deliberation.
You know, to, to me.
Yeah, although it's, that it's assumed it's gonna be a four-three vote, it's not, because I, I would abstain from the vote because I need to have some more information, so if you all could go back and review it and come back with a new recommendation, I'd agree.
All right, so, to me, the cleanest way is to strike down the committee recommendation and start over in the full board.
Or to put it a different way, if I understand, is we just, we vote no on this and approve the rest of, if we so, so want to approve the rest of the changes, so that this one coming back before us again later.
Yeah, 2.4, I agree, that's the easiest, cleanest way.
That's the way I think we do it.
Correct, that's kind of what I'm getting to, is because the committee recommendation is X, and if there is heartburn with the recommendation as a whole, rather than piecemealing it out, we need to
Vote it down.
Vote it down as, as the committee recommendation, and then pick up the pieces as the full board of supervisors and tease out what you want to approve.
Yep.
Any other discussion?
Well, we've already voted on part of the administrative assistant, so you won't have to vote on that again.
Right, that's a separate, yeah, that's, the administrative assistant is one, but this is a second committee recommendation, so we'll have to, if that's the pleasure of the board.
I'm willing to make a motion on the rest of it.
I think we've got a few more, a few more to roll.
Well, there's, there's another section that, sections E, F, and G roll into the bottom recommendation. So, do we want to, do we want to take this one and clean this one up before we move on to the next one? I mean, I, I think if the pleasure of the board is, forgive me, Mr. Chairman, for going off the script here. If the pleasure of the board is to, is to deny this recommendation, then we kill it altogether, and then revisit the subjects that you, that I'm assuming that you are okay with, pass those, and then kick this one back to committee, then move on to the further recommendations of the committee for the following. Is that, is that a fair capture? So, I guess before us now is the, is the, well, let me just read it here. After discussion, a motion was made by Atkins District Supervisor Charlie Atkins, and to add finance director to the list of positions allowed to live outside of Smith County, Chihuahua District Supervisor Mike Sturgill seconded the motion, and it was unanimously approved. So, I guess we need to have a vote for, to accept or reject this as we recommended, so my understanding is?
It's a committee recommendation of?
It's a committee recommendation to accept it, and that's what's before the board.
All right, any other questions, everybody understands the motion?
No, this one is simply to add finance director as a position that could, in theory, live outside of the county once hired, but I fully expect this one to be voted down, and then the conversation's over.
And if you don't agree with the residency, then you would vote no here to kill this recommendation.
I'm just a little slow.
No, that's, it takes me a minute to process it too, I get it, I understand.
I got you, I'm good.
All right, any other discussion? Any other questions about? So, we're just voting on the finance director? Right, never, just voting on the finance director, being added to the list of positions, I think we're gonna have to come back and make another motion to, to to leave out all the residential requirements at this point. So, we're really gonna, let's take this committee vote first and then we'll come back on the second one. So, before you, is a motion on adding the director of finance to the list of positions outside the county. So, I'll call for a roll call vote.
Ms. Atkins?
No.
Mr. Sturgill?
No.
Mr. Stevenson?
No.
Dr. Ratliff?
No.
Ms. Wyatt?
No.
Ms. Deal?
No.
Mr. Call?
No.
Okay, the motion failed. Now, the board will entertain a motion from, from the board of the whole that we, at this point, not change the residential requirements at all at this point and send it back to committee.
Second.
Second. All right, we have a motion to second, any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote, all those in favor?
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passed, go back to you now, Chris, and?
So, I guess, Mr. Farthing, can we entertain a motion to accept or reject sections A, B, and C before we go on? Or can we just go ahead and go A, B, C, E, F, and G?
Whatever your pleasure, I mean, you could say, I do a motion to approve the things we've already discussed, the items in the minutes of A, B, C, or whatever they are.
Okay, so.
You make that motion, somebody can second it, and then you move on to the other.
I, Mr. Chairman, I think it would be prudent at this point to, at least, let's put to rest A, B, and C with a formal vote before we move on to sections E, F, and G.
Dr. Mike, your motion.
I will make a motion that we entertain the approval of section, letter A, section 2.1 amendments. Letter B, section 2.2 amendments. Section, letter C, section 2.3 under nepotism.
Oh, second.
I'm sorry, we have a motion in two seconds, any further discussion?
I'm just trying to move it on.
All right, roll call vote, those in favor, yes?
Ms. Atkins, Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call?
Yes.
All right, motion approved, sections A, B, and C, now moving on to E now.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alright, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Section, excuse me, Letter E, Sections 2.5 through 5.1. That is, let me direct your attention to page eighty-seven in your packet. Is that correct?
Yes.
Two point, yes, okay. So starting at 2.5 on page eighty-seven, if Mr., if you could, provide some clarity there as to what we're talking about here.
So, yes, sir. So starting at page eighty-seven, everything that you see in red is largely grammatical or clarification purposes. Whether it's his/her rather than his, or, let's see, looking at the classification plan I approved by the Personnel Committee and the Board of Supervisors were recommended. I included the Personnel Committee as part of that discussion. Page ninety, just a few more grammaticals. I did say the prevailing minimum wage of the Commonwealth of Virginia rather than the minimum wage, because, you know, I don't expect Smith County to ever have our own minimum wage. Rather just put that back on the Commonwealth. And then further, I guess it was through 5.1. So 5.1 is where it starts talking about overtime occurring. And I think that that's basically just a clarification. Unless the total number of hours working in a seven-day period exceeds forty hours, you don't wanna earn overtime. That's just a clarification for time sheet purposes.
And, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, yes.
So I know that the county's, that's about exempt and non-exempt employees, Chris.
Yes.
So exempt employees would not...
Would not earn overtime.
Receive overtime. But do you, does the county participate in compensatory time?
We have flex time. So if an employee works ten hours one day and chooses to come in an hourly the next day, as long as he or she lets me or Lisa, whoever, the supervisor know, yeah, that's certainly...
So how do you track that?
It's hard to, honestly, especially with exempt employees. It's almost on a, on a system.
It's not documented anywhere?
Well...
Like on a timesheet or...
They do keep it on the timesheets. Yeah, I'm sorry. That's, that would be the best way to describe.
And does it require like an approval from the supervisor or something before they do that?
No, there's, since honestly, the exempt employees that we have all answer to me. And I've told my, it's basically the department heads. And I've told them, basically, you're, I expect you to run your department as you see fit and, you know, if there's changes or adjustments, let me know. But right now, I haven't had any concerns or any problems brought to me.
And do they, are they able to take that fairly expeditiously? Because I know in the past, different employment, real often when you're really busy and you have to work overtime, it's hard to take that time within that same pay period. So, but you're fine with that all works out well?
I prefer either the current, the current month or the following month.
Yeah.
I don't necessarily want folks to accrue hours for a year and take two weeks off. I mean, that's not, that's not acceptable, but I am flexible enough to allow them the month, the month that it's accrued or the following month after that. Those are really the biggest changes there between 2.5 and 5.4. Grammatical.
Okay.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Ut. And we'll go to Letter F, as in Frank, Section 6.9, Types of Leaves, not leaves, leave, type of leave. The committee discussed the option of moving to earning leave on a monthly basis instead of as a lump sum on the employee's anniversary. The number of days earned per year would remain the same based on years of service, but instead, the time would be earned monthly instead of a lump sum. Mr. Ut would also like to see the amount of hours that can be rolled over each year increase. After discussion, the committee unanimously agreed for Mr. Ut to draw up a new lease, excuse me, new leave section for the policy based on suggestions discussed at the meeting and present it back to the committee for consideration. I direct your attention to page ninety-seven. And if my math is correct, through one oh six of the details of the changes there. Mr. Ut, if you would care to take the lead at this point?
Yes, sir. The most important page, ninety-eight, is where annual leave is discussed. And, you know, there's not an action recommend, or a recommendation coming from the committee on this, but I will let you know that, you know, currently, the first year you do, we do accrue vacation hours on a monthly basis, but upon your first anniversary, you're given a full year's worth of days that day. So in theory, someone could work a year in two days and be able to be paid out for seventeen days if they worked it out. So what I'm recommending is changing that practice to basically just on a monthly basis. This, it continues past year five. It maybe, it goes up to, this from eight hours to ten hours and from ten hours to twelve. But I do need to come up with the actual language. That's gonna help us on the, on the timesheets, on the tracking. Right now, it's, it's an interesting spreadsheet to see what this page uses to track this with. And each employee also tracks their own vacation hours. And it's difficult to be able to keep up with. So in addition, as Mr., Dr. Ratliff said, right now, we only allow an employee to carry over forty hours from one year to the next anniversary period, only roll over forty. I would like to recommend giving some credence to allowing an employee to carry over more than just a week. Because what we have is, when you're coming up on your anniversary date, you know you have to take ten days. There's still some work that needs to be done. You either lose those ten days or you, you take your ten days and that work doesn't happen. Now, that still can happen when you're, if you're carrying over three weeks versus one week or four weeks, whatever the maximum is. But at least, it's easier for me and I think a lot of employees, if I'm losing ten out for ten days, but I know there's still twenty-five there that I'm rolling over, rather than I'm losing ten days and only have, I'm only starting with five as a fresh year, it's more difficult on the employees. So I do wanna come up with some better language on that. And now come back to the Personnel Committee. Yeah, go ahead.
Sean, if a person leaves, I assume that they get the full amount of whatever annual leave they recruit?
Pay out, big question.
What about sick leave? Is that on a percentage basis?
That is paid, I wanna say, at two dollar per day after so many years.
That's not very much.
No.
That's not in accordance with, I know this goal system or other agencies.
Ours was ten for years when you retired.
But it's a lot more than that now.
It's up, it's up to fifty.
Yeah.
In a lot of states, it's a day's, your daily rate when you retire. So fifty is better than ten, but...
Sometimes when you're not gonna get paid the two dollars, that encourages you to just take the time. Yeah, but if a person's making twenty, thirty dollars an hour.
Well, it used to be zero.
Yeah, we just, it only...
And I know it's just that it's a liability on there, odd and anything, but that's interesting. Okay.
Any, any further clarification, Mr. Ut?
That's it for, for leave.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Letter G, Section 7.12, Travel Policy. Mr. Ut added that a tip reimbursement restriction should be amended to allow for the reimbursement of up to twenty percent of the cost of the meal. Let's see, also noted that there were other areas of revision that largely included grammatical corrections. And I think it's on page one fourteen in the handout, if I haven't written my cheat notes down wrong. Yes, Mr. Ut, would you care to elaborate on the travel policy that you're referring to there?
Yes, sir. So basically, if there are, and I'll use economic development as an example. If I take an industrial prospect out for dinner, the county would, and our policy would fund the meal itself, but I personally would have to pay for the tip. And that might not be the way you want to be projected to potential investors. It's honestly, in my opinion, I don't know that, I don't think that it's fair if I'm work, if someone's doing work of the county to have to fund that. So, and I pulled the twenty percent. Twenty percent is one thing, it's what's allowed in state code reimbursement. And it's turned into the general norm, up from the fifteen percent that was for many years. But I do recommend that we up to that.
Mr. Ut, I have a couple of questions. In reading this today, it struck me that, and this may be a little off topic, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it talked about our, the county's meal policy of expenses of up to thirty-five dollars per person per day when traveling greater than one seventy-five. The state of Virginia meal rate right now is fifty-five dollars. And I realize we're not a county that's similar to Northern Virginia's rolling in money. But along your lines, to me, it really is a disincentivization to, for us to participate in anything or any other county employee to participate in any kind of further training or something if they're gonna be handed thirty-five dollars for a day's meals. And forgive me if I'm being a bit above my raising, so to speak, but try eating three meals on a day on thirty-five dollars without going in your own pocket. Not here and staying out of your fast food restaurants. And I'm not throwing shade on anybody, but to get a decent nutritious meal, it's tough to pull that off.
And that is one thing I've talked with the staff that we wanna bring later. I wanna come up with some examples from other localities and something to document the need to improve, increase that. And that is something I'll bring back to the committee.
I'm not asking for a change here. I'm just asking to try to take a look at it and move forward. I mean, you know, I go to Richmond once a month for Board of Pharmacy stuff and they pay me a meal allowance there and back. So I'm just saying, if we expect our hired employees, staff, and/or us to represent the county properly, we can't do it on an empty stomach. And again, to your point, should we subsidize it? But that's not the ask. The ask here is the twenty percent tip is what the ask is of the board.
Mr. Chairman?
So...
Yes, ma'am.
What about if you're entertaining people for restricted businesses? Are you limited to that also for them?
To thirty-five dollars? I don't, the, the policy doesn't speak to that. The policy only talks about per person, I guess, per employee.
Okay.
As a county administrator, I would be more flexible on that personally. Just because if, I've had experiences where I travel to headquarters in another state or maybe to another country, but where those costs are certainly worth the investment.
Yeah. Alright, so Atkins District Supervisor Charlie Atkins would like the secondary employment section to allow for an agricultural exemption. The committee would also like for an annual evaluation to be completed again. Mr. Ut agreed to proceed with developing recommendations for the committee to consider at one of their upcoming meetings. A motion was made by Chihuahua District Supervisor Mike Sturgill to approve the changes asked presented, with the exception of the annual leave section. Atkins District Supervisor Charlie Atkins seconded the motion. It was unanimously approved. So I guess the ask before the board at this point is to accept the letters E, F, and G. Is that correct?
Yeah, F will be exempt because I have to come back to the, to the committee, so...
Oh, yes, you're right. I'm sorry.
Changes other than, I would say, the changes other than Section 6.9.
Okay, so we're, to clarify, we're looking at Letter E, Section 2.5 through 5.1, and Letter G, Section 7.2.
Section 7.12.
I'm sorry, I misspoke. Section 7.12. Thank you. Section, Letter G, Section 7.12, Travel Policy. So that's the committee recommendation.
Okay. Any further discussion? Everybody thoroughly confused? I hope we got this straight. We're looking at sections, adopting Section E and G.
Yes.
The other, Section F is going back for further revisions and clarifications. And also, the B, the 2.4, is going back for clarification. We'll vote on those later. So now the vote will be for F, or for E and G.
Yes, sir.
Okay, having said that, roll call vote.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call?
Yes.
Alright, motion, that motion passed.
With no further business to discuss, the meeting was adjourned at ten fifty-eight a.m. Mr. Chairman?
Alright, thank you for the report. So at this point, we will not attempt to adopt the personnel policy until, we've adopted the sections. We've got some sections that's gonna be amended and brought back to us again. Once we get those out of the way, I assume we will adopt it as a whole. At least that's what I see the timeline being for. If anyone sees any difference, speak up and let us know. But we want this, we want this to work where everybody understands it and everybody agrees with it. Moving on then, if I can find my place. Public Safety Committee.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Public Safety Committee met on February the second. At a lemonade and in attendance that day was myself, Chris Ratliff, Park Supervisor, and Mike Sturgill, Chihuahua Supervisor. Staff and attendants, Mr. Sean Ut, Mr. Chris Crawford, Mr. Shannon Williams joined us virtually. And we had a guest from, the old, the old town manager, Brian Martin. And the first item on the agenda we discussed was the County Chiefs Meeting, which I mentioned in our last Board of Supervisors meeting, that Mr. Crawford is meeting with the chiefs from all across the county once a month. And they meet the night before our scheduled public safety meeting so we can have discussions from those meetings the following day. So that group met on February first. It was held at Atkins Fire Department. In that meeting, most of the agencies reported that calls are up as of recent. And also, one of the items of discussion was moving forward with billing for hazardous material calls. And there was a call, I believe, in the Atkins Section 91 that held up quite a bit. The equipment across the county and those type of calls extend for long periods of time. So in order to bring in other sources of income, it would help to bill for those calls. So Mr. Ratliff made a motion to move forward with the process to begin billing for hazardous material calls by Smith County. A second was made by Mr. Sturgill. And just to point out, the billing would be re-processed to whichever agencies are on scene. So if Atkins, Mary, and Chihuahua are on scene, then the funding would be allocated to those agencies accordingly. So that is a committee recommendation.
Alright, we have a committee recommendation. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
About how much money are we talking about that it's costing us to respond to these that we aren't getting reimbursed for?
Mr. Crawford, if you can speak to that?
He's, he's not here, but I can, I can come up, answer it. The, I would estimate, probably anywhere from a thousand dollars to five, six, seven thousand dollars. We can bill for the drive mix for the, and the time of, we can actually bill for the time of each vehicle, responding vehicle. And the discussion is, has been to focus on interstate accidents, the ones that take the big response, larger response. A general accident around the county may not be billed, but I mean, it's more of a, if, if there's no insurance to bill, then I won't, we're not gonna be billing the car owner.
Yeah, that seems very common sense to do that, yeah.
There's, honestly, we're leaving a lot of money on the table and each department is leaving the money on the table. And what we're doing, we're recommending that that be coordinated through the Emergency Management Coordinator and he can help spark stuff.
Who's doing the billing and keeping the records?
Mr. Crawford.
Yeah.
And it's not gonna be a huge endeavor, I don't expect.
And it's typical, other agencies do the same. The trucking companies are, have the insurance to cover this, so we just need to take it easy on it. Because it does tie up... Because it does tie up a lot of our equipment, and, and most of the time, more than one agency as well.
All right, that is a committee recommendation. So, uh, any more discussion? If not, call for a roll call vote.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Radler?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Ms. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Call.
Yes.
All right, motion passed. Moving on to the town of Saltville resolution.
Great, thank you. The next item on the agenda was the Town of Saltville resolution that the Town of Saltville recently passed, requesting, uh, three items of support from the Smith County Board of Supervisors in establishing an emergency medical service that would operate under the town, similar to the town of Mary and the town of Chilhauie. Uh, Mr. Crawford advised that discussions have been in January, and the town has moved quickly to provide their intent and capacity forward, and intends to keep open communication to Saltville Rescue Squad and the County Board of Supervisors. Um, this is a step moving forward, best serve the citizens of county, which is what we're here for. Um, and I wanna certainly see, um, peaceful conversations and discussions moving forward, and everybody communicating and being on the same page. Um, after, uh, upon that, uh, conversation, Mr. Mike Sturgill made a motion to recommend that Smith County Board of Supervisors approve the request for support for the Town of Saltville and continue to assist the Town of Saltville moving forward. The second was made by Chris Ratliff, and the vote was unanimous. So that is a committee recommendation.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I can get just a little bit of information, I, um, I don't, I'm totally blind to what our support to the Town of Saltville is gonna be financially and any other support. And I know I had several rescue squad members approach me, and maybe Roscoe can feel some of these holes in it, had a lot of concerns. So I just don't know what this resolution is, other than saying that we're gonna support them. I, I guess I'd like some details.
I, I can offer.
Okay, do.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Sean, go ahead.
I can offer a little clarification. Um, the, the resolution or the request on Saltville at this point today is requesting that the county name, uh, the Town of Saltville as a DARA, a Designated Emergency Response Agency. At this point, Saltville Rescue continuing that, in that designation and continues in that role, because they don't have, the Town of Saltville doesn't have the infrastructure. What they're looking to do is trying to develop the infrastructure to create an EMS solution. At the same time, in my opinion, I think it would be nice to see a merger instead of a, a, a takeover. Um, those conversations still need to happen or, or continue. Uh, but tonight's action or recommendation is only having that designation. There's no, we're not, we're not tying up any funding, we're not promising funding. We're basically saying, in my opinion, the, the reading of the resolution is, is saying that we are looking to provide, to figure out the answer to provide EMS services to the northern part of the county. Right now, and if, if you make the DARA designation, there'll be two potential agencies, because you have the town in the current Saltville Rescue Squad.
Is he correct, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, that's right. You gotta have, you gotta designate those guys, even if they're not operating yet, you want them on the list, so when they become operational, they're there.
So this commits us no other way than just this resolution committing.
No, you have to appropriate money to them. Uh, you'd have to pass a motion, appropriate money, if you're gonna give them money.
Correct.
And that's not doing that here.
That's not doing it. To give them any money, okay, I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So just from my understanding, the Saltville Rescue Squad will still continue to operate?
Yes.
But this will just be a supplemental?
Well.
Or separate?
At this point, the Saltville Rescue continues. I think the overall, the long-term goal for the Town of Saltville is to, to merge the services or to, uh, the Town of Saltville to take over the territory. There, uh, like I said, there's a lot of conversations that still need to happen, um, or, or, or work through. Uh, so, so this is the first step. The town can't apply for the state license without being designated a DARA.
Okay.
Um, so that's, that's really the, the, the process.
Can we get Roscoe away?
Yeah, Roscoe.
Yes.
Roscoe, we want, Roscoe, we want your opinion on what's going on.
Well, I, I'm, I'm like Phil, I, I just got this thing today, and we've been talking a little bit about it. The squad is kinda upset about it, they've really stirred up a hornet's nest, or less you might say. Cause nobody knows what's going on, what's gonna happen. You know, the town's talking about absorb it, which, you know, eventually may happen. But they talk about volunteers and stuff, and as you all know, we've, Charlie Heintz has said many, many times, there's no such thing as volunteers anymore. But the squad is doing fine right now. They have a good budget right now. And I, I just can't understand why the town would want to right now anyway, cause it would be a financial burden on the town. And I love both of them, I love the town and squad both. I just want them to be real careful in what they're saying, and y'all make up your minds sparingly, because we really have some, uh, rescue people upset. They, they called me numerous times, we've had several meetings, and they're just really disappointed with what's going on after surviving all this time, and then coming up and having them hit them with this. Now I know it's not final, and we, I'll go along with whatever view I'll go along with, but it don't mean I gotta like it. I'm not gonna vote on the, the, what, the crop mace tonight. I'm gonna abstain from it because I'm a member of the board, the directors of the squad for twelve years. And I don't wanna do anything to upset that for them people. I love every one of them. And they've done a great job, and you all know it. That's, that's all I can say right now.
I think, I think Lori's statement in this resolution I've read resonates real big to me. You know, peaceful transition and continue to communicate, some more in this, we've lost communication with Town of Saltville. Them people have come to my door, the rescue squad members, they've met me at the store, they're, like Roscoe says, they're upset. And it, what, do they have a right? I don't know, cause I don't know what's going on myself. So I don't know that we don't need a meeting and some communication. So, I, I think you need to keep them happy, so.
How does our EMS coordinator, where does he stand on this?
Um, if I could speak to the, to all of this. First, let me say, I, I apologize if anybody feels like they've been left out of the loop. I certainly, if anybody ever has a question, uh, you all hopefully have my phone number or email, I will answer questions anytime. Second of all, it was relayed to me by the, the folks who were sitting at the table in discussion. That's Mr. Gary from Saltville Rescue and leaders from the town. They have sat down in the room together and talked, so this is, these are not backdoor conversations that are happening. Mr. Crawford has been in these meetings. They, they may have been a little heated at times, but there's never been a situation where anybody has, has sat down and talked about doing something without consulting with the other party, which is why I made the comment of, I, I want this to be open communication. I want it to be the best for the citizens. This is not about agency versus town. This is about if somebody calls nine-one-one on Christmas Day and is having a cardiac arrest, an ambulance needs to get there. So that is why I am advocating for open communication and, and a peaceful decision about what's best moving forward. Um, so I'm not sure why, but there's some misunderstanding with the squad members. I, I apologize for that. I would hope that any, anybody in leadership would have passed it on down to their team, because that's what a leader's supposed to do. Um, so, uh, I hate that it's turned into a hornet's nest, because it didn't start out that way. And I wish Mr. Crawford was here to talk about those conversations, because he was in those meetings. And certainly, Mr. Uh, if you were there, I would welcome you to make comments.
Sure. Um, I would, I would say that, um, Mr. Crawford's been a lot more involved in it than I have. But I have, I, I've sat in on, on a couple of the conversations, but my position, my opinion is the county, the county's position is, is to ensure that the EMS call is in. However that's answered is, is a litany of, of reasons, but what I've told Mr. Crawford and the Town of Saltville too, we're not taking sides in any issue. We are facilitating a process, and at the end of the day, there's, if there's a funding request, it'll be compared against last year's request, no matter who provided the service, and, um, and, and funded accordingly. But the numbers, going to Mr. Stevenson's concerns, um, haven't even been discussed yet. And we have told this, the Town of Saltville, if the county was to provide funding for the service, it wouldn't hap, we don't have money right now. It wouldn't happen till July first anyway. It'll have, have to run through the pro, the, the budget process. Um, so, yeah, that's, you know, we're, we're trying to stay arms length and help facilitate the, the conversations, the, uh, the open conversations, and, and as Ms. Neal said, it has been difficult at times. Uh, we've had some good conversations too, but, um, you know, there, there's still a lot of work to be done.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, we saw in our last budget process last year, EMS is really changing. And it's a big part of the county budget now, and will actually increase as we move forward. And there are lots of things to iron out. I know that we have a committee, and I know that reluctant committees, it's hard to transfer that, all of that dialogue into a Board of Supervisors meeting that can make it really lengthy. However, am I not correct if these are public meetings?
They are.
So any of us, even though we're not in the committee and we do not have a say on it, we are free to attend this meeting. So I would like to be put on the list to know when the meetings are held. I think that might help me to come to the meetings more informed, because I think this is gonna be a really serious issue in the majority.
Uh, if you don't mind, put me on there too, and I don't, Lori, I got total confidence in that committee. I think I brought those three members up, so I'm not doing, on the other hand, is in my district. But, and I'm, and I still may not be there, but I, I'd like to know that it's happening. Now, uh, and I'm trying to, what concerns me is, I guess I've just got a red flag sticking over my head, you know? It ain't been too many months ago, a year or so ago, uh, that rescue squad was grounded. And the Town of Saltville, to my small recollection, and correct me if I'm wrong, they, in that, they didn't offer a whole lot of help. Uh, am I wrong?
I think they, I think they give a, I think they gave a sixty thousand dollar, or they, they gave, uh, uh, some level of, of donation, one-time support.
Uh, sixty thousand dollars, that won't hardly get to me through six months. So, you know, I just, I got, I got some concerns, Lori, and I got full confidence in this. I just want the people there that's answering them calls, why they, they survived and didn't have no money, and I guess they're surviving now, I don't know. Maybe Mr. Crawford could, it's kind of a shame he ain't here. But I don't wanna throw them people to the wolves if they ain't happy with this move. And I, I'm not saying they wasn't communication, Lori, I'm saying, I don't think the people was happy that the Town of Saltville was gonna take it, just taking these steps, and maybe I misinterpreted them wrong. I'm just, I don't know, I'm real concerned about it.
Let me make a, a comment here, cause I'm, I've completely been out of the everything, and so, you know, I'm not said. I look at this resolution in front of us as our, as an attempt by us to level the playing field. And then all we're doing is, all we're being asked to do, and all we're doing is designating the Town of Saltville as a Designated Emergency Response Agency. So now they can get with the Saltville Rescue, and they can talk on, on equal grounds, that either one of them can do it. Whereas right now, Saltville can't say, hey, we gonna do it, because they're not a designated agency. Uh, all we're doing is saying, hey, if you wanna do it, you can work it out with the rescue squad, we will designate you that way. Um, we're not obligating money, we're not picking sides, we're just saying we wanna level playing field. And this is the way we perceive that that can be obtained.
So this don't give them any control over how the rescue squad runs their business?
Not that I'm aware of.
No.
This, this.
Not at all.
This basically just designates them as an emergency response agency.
All right, then you, I'm good.
They're able to wave a piece of paper and say, hey, we got the designation now, that, that's all they can say.
Basically, that's what they're wanting, just to certify their sale.
Right, right.
All right, I'm good, thanks.
I will clarify that this designates two agencies for the service, for that service area, basically. You know, the.
The rescue squad being one of them?
Yes, yes.
Right. I hope there ain't some hidden agenda that.
I can assure you, there's not.
All right.
And, and moving forward, I wanna make sure everybody's on the same page. And if, if you all as a board would like to request for me to call you individually as soon as our public safety committee meetings are over, I, I will be happy to do that, because I want everybody to be on the same page moving forward. Because I wanna speak for the whole committee, but I, I feel that they would agree. Our goal is, at the end of the day, is to look at the data that we pull from the nine-one-one cab system, and we see response times, rollover calls, all that. And what our number one goal is, is to make sure that when somebody calls nine-one-one, they get the help.
Mr. Chairman?
And we.
A, as Phil said, Lori, it certainly isn't any reflection on you, because, or other members of the board, I know you did a great job. This is such an involved project that we're really just kind of getting into. Personally, I would just like to, to have more informed decision-making ability. So I think that would be helpful for me to see the numbers, rather than to have to rely on you to call me. So I would be more than happy, even though I'm not a voting member of that board, that committee. Um, I would just, I would be glad to see my time to attend some of them.
I will, I will say that, that we do have a standing meeting, the first Tuesday at eleven o'clock every month, just because of the importance of putting things together. It's, they, I guess the committee's been meeting for several months now, as a standing meeting every month, so.
I, I'm glad Judy's wanting to go, but I, I got full confidence in it. All I can tell you is, is when you get here, I'm gonna ask you a hundred questions. I mean, I wanna know. I ain't saying I don't have confidence in you, but I'm gonna know what I vote for when it comes to something as important. You know, where, where, where were you are, Lori? Uh, in my part of the world, we're thirty minutes away from a good call. And you can bet it, if I raise my hand, it's gonna be for the best decision of them people over there for this. And, uh, you know, uh. Right now, them people at Saltville Rescue Squad, they, they, they've done a, a heck of a job. And I sure ain't gonna turn my back on them. That's, that's the only reason I'm asking questions. I know you, everybody on that committee's looking for the same answer I am.
Right. And I, and I certainly appreciate quest, the questions, because you may ask something we didn't think of. So I definitely feel like this is an all-in, all-deck situation, and moving forward, if, if a leader of another party tells me they're communicating, I, I don't need to assume that they are. So please pass on my apologies to those on the, on the squad who, who have made calls to you. That information wasn't passed along to them, that's unfortunate.
Uh, that's all right, I appreciate you. It's just, they don't seem like they're happy, so when they ain't happy, I wanna know what's going on, cause it may be my.
Well, I would be unhappy too, if I found out second-hand back yes. So thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah.
Hey, you did a good job, Lori, don't, don't take me the wrong way.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, thank you, I, I appreciate it. And, and your attitude, yeah.
Just seeing them fight that long, you know, any, any sign whatsoever that something's gonna happen to it, upsets me. And, you know, I will defend them to the end.
Yeah.
Sure.
All right, moving along now, um, we've got the motion before us, the committee recommendation. None other to, and I, I think, I think we pretty well beat it to death here. And this is no way committing any kind of monetary money to the, either group. We're just saying we want them to have the designation. So, uh, we'll call for the vote on that, and, uh, we'll call for a roll call vote.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
I'm gonna say yes, um, based on how Charlie explained it concerning.
Dr. Radler?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Ms. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Call.
I will abstain because I'm on the Board of Directors, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I, the motion passed. Uh, I appreciate everybody's input on this. Uh, it, it, as, as I believe Judy said earlier, this is a, this is gonna be a big issue before us, and we wanna keep a look. We, we as a group do not need to be favoring one side or the other. We need to favor the side that's gonna do the best for a citizen of Smith County. We need to favor the side that's gonna do the best for the citizens of Smith County. And we can't do that until we know where they both stand. And this allows us to get a little bit better understanding of where they stand. Um, moving on now, Lori, back to you again.
Great, thank you. Uh, and just to comment, we, the landscape of emergency services, like Ms. Wyatt mentioned earlier, is, is changing quickly and we have to stay on top of it. So this is probably not the only hard conversation we're gonna be having, so. Um, moving on, the next, uh, the next item we discussed was the survey that we talked about at the last meeting that was gonna be sent out to, uh, citizens of Smith County regarding emergency services just to kind of get a general idea of the, getting, getting the public's input because we can sit here all day and make assumptions on how things are going. But hearing directly from the citizens is important. So that survey's gonna be released this week. It's gonna be in paper form and electronic form and we're gonna leave it open for about two months to try to collect as much data as possible. And that will be shared with this group by either Mr. Crawford or Mr. Uh. Next item we discussed was the EMPG supplemental grant. The county's taken ownership now of four mobile message boards, uh, that, from the funding that we received from the grant. Um, the boards we use to put out emergency messages and then also as a way to encourage people to sign up for, um, the average notification system that we're gonna be implementing. And just a reminder to everybody, that's not just for emergency notifications. That can also be used for service packages like water, um, construction issues, different things like that. So there'll be a good, uh, supplement program that we'll be able to use. Next item we discussed is the Smith County Training Academy. I don't know how many of you all are familiar with the facility in Chilhawee that is used for training for fire departments, um, in the county. It's also used region-wise. We've got several fire departments from around the region. I know Richlands was there not too long ago. But they use that training facility for firefighter one and firefighter two certifications. Um, so what they're looking to do is adding, um, an onsite classroom onto that facility. And, um, they've obtained some, um, or actually, a rule development loan is what they're looking at doing. Um, and the town of Chilhawee is asking the county to assist in paying for the cost because obviously other departments use it, that use it already in the county. Um, Mr. Crawford advised us that the onsite classroom and the schedule of classes would, uh, be set, moving us closer to, to that, at this time, the site is pulling students from other areas outside of Smith County. Um, and other county departments charge a fee. Um, so like, for instance, if there's one in Tazza County, if anybody travels to Tazza County that's outside of that county, they would pay a fee for that. So if any agency outside of Smith County comes, obviously they would pay a fee. Um, the training center is using instructors that are in the county and they usually volunteer to teach, so that helps keep the costs down. Uh, it's certainly a great product that we would have for the area, uh, to bring in folks. And one of the things that I mentioned, I get complaints, well, I don't want to necessarily say complaints, but concerns from some of our firefighters who are volunteer that work on the weekends because sometimes the trainings may be in southern Virginia or far southwest Virginia. So they may have to, to work on those training dates. But having the fire academy here in Smith County actually allows them, uh, more flexible scale to attend the training. So this is gonna help us be able to, um, train our own volunteers and, and have them right here in the county. So that way they don't have to travel or worry about having to work around their work schedules. And so the request that the town of Chilhawee is, is making for us to help them with the cost of this facility is five thousand dollars. And Mr. Sturgill made a motion, um, for the board to fund that request. And that would assist in, uh, the classroom and the second votes made by Mr. Ratliff. And the vote was unanimous, so that is a committee recommendation.
All righty, um, any further discussion? Eric Noon, uh, call for a voice, uh, for a roll call vote?
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call?
Yes.
Now that we've approved it, I'm assuming there's a place in the budget where we know where we're gonna get this five thousand from?
There's, there's funds in the, um, in the name of, it's just like me, it's, it's in-
Supplemental appropriations.
Thank you, supplemental appropriations.
Sounds good. Back to you, Lori.
All right, the next item we discussed was vaccines and the progress in Smith County. Um, Smith County still remains one of the top vaccinated counties in southwest Virginia. And at this point, due to supplies, vaccines are being closely regulated by the state. It had been up to the health district, but now it's a state, statewide thing, so that's changed a little bit. Um, Smith County was averaging around eight to nine hundred vaccines per week, uh, which is about two percent of the population. Um, and then now that's, now that's changed a little bit since it's up to the state. But Mr. Ratliff also advised that pharmacies are ready and waiting for supplies to begin coming there. So we're hoping to see that open up for that one. Um, next item we discussed was going for the public safety committee.
Just a second, Lori, we have a couple-
Invitation to fire EMS services, um, that also includes law enforcement. So we're gonna extend the invitation to Sheriff Shore for him to be, be involved and move to a full public safety committee.
Ms. Deal?
Something else I'd like-
Lori, we have a couple of questions about the past. Yeah, I'll start with, uh, with, uh, Phil. Sorry to interrupt.
I guess just on the vaccine, when is it gonna be available to, um, next group of people, like sixty-five and under? I forgot, several people asked me, can anybody answer that?
So, I have a, an update that was gonna be under the county administrator-
All right, then I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Lori, continue on.
Oh, Judy has a question.
That's okay, that's, that's kind of why I just left your desk and I'm ready.
Just a quick question, Mr. Chairman.
Judy has a question also, Lori.
I'd like to direct it to Dr. Ratliff. Do you know, have any idea if an pharmacy might be able to give the vaccine?
I don't have any idea. Every, all of my colleagues I've spoken to were all ready to go, but no product to administer.
I understand it's on the black market now. All right, back to you, Lori.
Okay, great. Um, something else I kind of want to do to, to bridge the gap between other law enforcement agencies that serve Smith County is that you open it up to them. But for starters, we're gonna have, uh, Sheriff Shore attend, attend those meetings. And, and maybe additional agencies moving forward. Any comments on that item?
Any comments?
Great, moving on.
Moving on.
All right, moving on to emergency medical dispatching. By twenty twenty-three, we're gonna have to be considered an EMD, which is emergency medical dispatch. So that's quite a bit more advanced than what we're offering at this point. So if a citizen calls in for an emergency and, for instance, the person they're calling for needs CPR, our dispatchers have to be trained to give directions on how to do that until an ambulance arrives. So we want to get ahead of the game because that's obviously gonna be additional cost to the town. So we're making sure we stay ahead of that. Um, we're looking at who is gonna spearhead that effort since all the dispatchers now fall under, uh, the sheriff's department. Um, obviously, we want to make sure it's a, an effort by, by both parties since the funding would be coming through the county. Uh, so we've encouraged Mr. Williams and the sheriff to work together. Um, we also discussed dispatcher salaries because once they get this advanced training, we want to make sure that we're in line with other localities cause the last thing we want to do is train for emergency medical dispatch and then they move to another county where they can get, get a higher salary. So we want to make sure we're on the same page as far as, um, employee retention is concerned. And we'll be continuing that discussion moving forward. So you're, you're gonna hear me talk about that a lot between now and twenty twenty-three. Any questions on that item? All right, moving on to radio system agreements. We had a little bit of discussion back and forth about Tannersville Fire and Rescue. Apparently at this time, any call to Tannersville goes through Smith County nine-one-one dispatch center due to geographic and infrastructure issues. So the towers in, uh, that serve, uh, Tannersville are actually our, our towers. We've not received payment or anything for that. We don't bill Tazza County for that. And the same can be said for Roy Retreat, but it's a vice versa situation. So with County actually supplies our, um, citizens, they call nine-one-one in the western part, excuse me, the eastern part of the county. That's, um, through with County. So basically after several little comments back and forth, um, we said it's just a, a neighborly thing to do, to not charge. Uh, once we kind of said, done it to the math, it may be a hundred or two hundred dollars, um, that would, that would be billed. And I, I don't think that's enough to, to worry about. Uh, one, the other thing that we talked about, um, was private services using our radio systems and not paying a fee. Um, and since we are actually requesting that those private agencies help us fill calls that they not be able to be answered by our own agencies, uh, he recommended that we did not charge a fee. Um, and then also, um, we're gonna continue that discussion on that. So if you have any input, please feel free to, to speak to one of us on the committee. And our next meeting will be March second at eleven AM. And I welcome any comments or questions.
All right, thank you, Lori. Good, good report. Uh, we're gonna take a, about a five-minute, quick five-minute break. Uh, we'll be back, ready to go here in just about five minutes.